Good morning, everyone. So it appears that the mayor's been delayed and we have a really full morning. So I'm going to get things started here simply because I'm the only one on deck. I, the only one in the room, so I've been deputized. So we'll start with a roll call and get the meeting started here and then we'll have a discussion around the agenda.
If your siblings want to come in and learn about that, then we can.
Counselor Banga, could you mind?
It's pretty.
Great, thank you. We'll start with you, sir, Counselor Banga.
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Katerina?
Yes.
Counselor Zadak?
I'm here.
Counselor Essinger?
Good morning.
Counselor Hamilton?
Good morning.
Counselor Henderson? Not yet, okay, perhaps we're in the same place. Counselor Nak?
Good morning.
Counselor McKean?
Present.
Counselor Nichol?
Good morning.
Counselor Paquette?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning. Counselor Walters?
Good morning, Counselor.
Good morning. So that's 11. We're missing Mayor Iverson and Counselor Henderson at the moment. So Madam Clerk, could you please just perhaps summarize what we have to get through this morning?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So you, council still has the following items to work through today. Item 613 and 614 to do with DATS and the Accessible Transit Voucher Pilot Program. Item 650, the prospective temporary shelter. Bylaw 7.2, which is the election bylaw. There are three motions pending, and I believe if we run out of time today, those could be laid over to the next council meeting. And then there is one private report still remaining, item 9.2, Temporary Accommodations Update. And just a friendly reminder, you have a non-regular scheduled at 1:30 today, and there is an item that is already time-specific.
For 1:30?
That is correct.
Right, okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So I believe right now, we were, we, when we last were together, we were on items 613 and 14, and we were coming out of private. But I, I do note some urgency to deal with 7.2 and 9.2 this morning. So I wonder if we should, I wonder if anybody has a view as to what we should do first? Should we continue with 613 and 14 and finish that off, or should we move to one of these other items?
Can something be said about the urgency, Mr. Chair? And I'm happy to move those forward if they got dark.
Well, item 9.2 is on the Temporary Accommodation Update, which is a current conversation. And item 7.2 is the election bylaw, which we need to pass today in order to meet timelines around advertising and the like, leading up to the next election.
So we probably should wait for the mayor for the other one, but I'm happy to move to bring 7.2 forward.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Ms. Counselor Nichol.
If we need to move the DATS voucher debate to another council meeting, feel free to do so. I thought I'll put things up here. Not an emergency.
Thank you, Counselor Nichol. So I, I've, we have a motion on the floor seconded to bring item 7.2 forward. We call the vote on that then, please?
Yep, we're just going to get that set up and sent out, just to warm up the system.
All right, so we're just pulling the poll start on the East Side. We'll come your way shortly.
So just to confirm, Deputy Mayor, you're voting on bringing item 7.2 forward?
You should see the window now, so please vote on bringing 7.2 forward.
Who are you waiting on?
I mean, yes, I can't get my thing to roll here.
We're good to, we're, we have 11 votes, Counselor.
Please display the vote. And that is carried 11 to 0. Good morning, Mr. McLean. Do you have a presentation to make?
We have a very brief presentation, if you'd like to see it.
I don't need it. I did select it, so if anyone else needs it, that's fine, but I don't.
Very good. Anyone care for the presentation? Hearing done. We'll go straight to questions. Counselor Nak?
Thank you, yes, and just, just recognizing the time. I actually just had one question. This, this bylaw is obviously very similar to, I think, the ones we've done in the past. My only question relates to mail-in ballots and recognizing the timeline identified in the bylaw is people would have to request it by August 1st. And I believe that the purpose for that would be to provide you with enough time to send out the ballots and get them back. Recognizing we're at a bit of a unique time, and we have no idea what that's going to look like next year, and that there's been a lot of conversation in, to our, from our neighbor south of the border about mail-in ballots. I just wanted to get a better understanding of if that's flexible, if the situation changes, if it's challenging for people to get out to the polls for whatever reason, do we have the opportunity to make adjustments if needed?
So the way the bylaw is written is that the mail-in special ballot applications must be submitted between August 1st and 4:30 on Election Day. So it doesn't have to be submitted by August 1st, but can't be before August 1st.
Thank you, and maybe I misunderstood. Is it, but you have to request it before then? Is that not how I read the bylaw? And if I didn't, if I read it incorrectly, my apologies.
So applications must be received before 4:30 PM on Election Day, October 18th, 2021.
I understand, so this is, sorry for keep making you wait. I misread that, so I'll just move the, I think it's the first reading of the bylaw.
I'll just check to see if there's any other questions on item 7.2.
I'll second it.
Very good. Seeing no further questions, moved by Counselor Nak, seconded by Counselor.
Zadak.
Zadak, thank you. Wishing to speak to it, anyone? Let's call the vote. Please vote. On first reading of item 7.2.
Good to go, Deputy Mayor.
Please display the vote. That is carried 11 to 0. Counselor Nak?
I'll move second reading, please.
Seconder?
I'll second.
Counselor Zadak, thank you. Please vote.
Counselor Walters? Good to go, Deputy Mayor.
Please display the vote. And that is carried 11 to 0. Counselor Nak?
I'll move consideration of third reading on that bylaw.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote on consideration of third reading. Display the vote, please. That is carried 11 to 0.
And I'll move third reading of bylaw 19457.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
We're good to go, Deputy Mayor.
Please display the vote. And that is carried unanimously. Now, the mayor is still not here, so I think perhaps we should move back then to item 613, 614, and continue that discussion. We're just going to gather the right individuals. And while we're doing that, perhaps we could queue up a speakers list.
Absolutely. We'll just get that logged in. Just a friendly reminder, there's a motion on the floor, so we'll put the motion up and we'll get the speakers queued up.
Thank you. So, and I'm sorry, I can't quite see that motion.
We'll, I'll put it in the chat and just, the queue that's up is the queue that was carried over from Monday. So first on the list is Mayor Iverson, followed by Counselor Nichol, then followed by Counselor Nak. And I'll get the motion for clarity put in the chat.
Very good. So refer to the chat for the, the text of the motion, and we will go to Counselor Nichol, please.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I'll see to Counselor Nak, because I think we've talked about this enough here, so I'm ready just to go to the vote.
Thank you, Counselor Nichol. Counselor Nak?
Thank you, and, and yeah, I guess Counselor Nichol will be able to close anyways. I think it was his motion, so, and, and I forgot where we were. We were speaking to it, and so just, I remember during the discussion where we left off, and there was some hesitation by a couple members of council worried that this might not be the right solution to get more accessible taxis out into the world, if you will. And I worry with some of the other alternatives that was talked about. So for example, creating a grant to retrofit vehicles is when we're talking about the amount of money for something like this, I don't think that's going to make a measure. Sorry, my microphone is being difficult. So that it won't create a, as measurable of an impact as some has the ability to do so, because as we heard during that session, we haven't seen increase really in accessible taxis for many years. And retrofitting a, or doesn't, that's going to really have a material impact on what we're doing going forward for accessible vehicles. And going back to the other point is that this field, the, the idea of something like a voucher feels like a good market solution to drive up to, and I know this is the, the chicken and egg conversation that we've been having, but it feels is the right order to, which is to provide individuals with the opportunity to use those to help offset, and that we're putting on our DATS system, which was an issue before COVID hit. And ideally, if this works the way we hope it does, this will actually motivate those taxi companies to acquire and do their own retrofit for more vehicles, because there's now sufficient demand, and it will now be economical for them to provide those trips. So I appreciate that there might at some point be other alternatives that we want to explore, but we heard in the discussion that there's, that this won't be taking away money from other accessible vehicle services or programs that we're going to be delivering. This will just add one more tool into that toolbox. So I want to thank Counselor Nichol for bringing this forward. I think this is worth us trying, like we're doing in other aspects of our transit system. We're looking for new ways to sort of add pillars to our existing service. And the last thing I want to do is leave that money sitting around, not actually fulfilling its goal, which is to provide opportunity for more accessible rides. And this feels like the right order to be testing something out. So I, I would encourage the counselors to support this, recognizing it is a pilot, we will learn from it, we will adapt. And again, just reminding, and I, I reconfirmed with the Acceptability Advisory Committee on Monday during their meeting, which is that, so they're, they're not expressing outright opposition or support, but they think there's potential from this and are interested to see the results of that pilot. So I would encourage all of you to, to think about that in your vote, which is that if you feel that there's an opportunity that this could fill a gap, which I believe it will, that I'd ask for you to support this, so we can at least try this. And that's, I'll leave it there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Nak. Anyone else wishing to speak before I go to Counselor Nichol to close? Counselor Nichol, any further comments?
I'll be brief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do lots of pilots. This may work, this may not work. This may work, this may not work. Let's go with this with our eyes open, but I do think the concept is worth a try. So, you can make your decision for yourself. I think this is, has great possibilities, but you know what? Until you do the pilot, we're not going to know for sure. And we do lots of pilots. I can, I can go back to even talking about when we did urban chickens and when we did urban beekeeping. We did those pilots. So, this is a pretty important thing. This is about accessibility for our very vulnerable community. So, I think it's worth a try and it's, and it's not, it's not drawing on our, on our tax base. This money is coming from the reserve and so on. I did talk to Mr. Bradshaw on the Transit Union about this program. He expressed his concerns and we talked a fair bit about it. He has some legitimate concerns, so again, I emphasize this was a pilot and we will see how it evolves if council so deems it to be worthy to look at. I appreciate Counselor Nack's comments as he is the point person on this file and so we're both pretty much aligned on the idea, we got to put some choice into the model. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nichol. So, just for clarity, the motion on the floor is that on item 613, that the report be received for information and that on item 614, that implementation of a pilot taxi voucher program as outlined in option two, a program restricted to medical trips only for all DATs clients of the October 16th, 2020 City Operations Report, 8036, be approved.
Mister Deputy Mayor, just on a point of order, I noticed that Counselor Paquette had clicked in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And you may have missed that, before Counselor Nichol closed, so I just thought you might want to offer him an opportunity.
Absolutely. Counselor Paquette, did you have comments to make?
Oh, I appreciate it, but no, the time has passed. Thank you.
Thank you. We will call the vote then.
Point of privilege, Mr. Chair. Can we split the vote?
We can. So, we will first then vote on part one of the motion.
Yeah, and apologies for the interruption, but I just would like to get some clarity on what council would like to do with regards to the legal advice that's attached to item 614. So, if we're going to be splitting it, if we could currently, if we could possibly add a point three, and then we can just vote on each motion one at a time.
So, I would accept an amendment that includes some positive action on the current attachment to, which right now would be kept private.
And there should be, it would be helpful if there was a motion put on the floor to keep that legal attachment in private, subject to the appropriate sections of FOIP.
And that would be a part three. Is Counselor Nack, is there a seconder?
Second.
Second, thank you, Counselor Esslinger. So, that would be a point three, that attachment to be kept private, subject to the FOIP clauses that I don't have in front of me.
That's section 27, and if we could treat it as an amendment?
Section 27. And that, so we're going to treat that as an amendment to the motion, first of all, to vote to add a point three. Anyone wishing to speak to that amendment? Let's call the vote on the amendment then, please.
The vote's on its way to you to add the amendment as a point three to the main motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Please vote.
We're good to go.
Please display the vote. And that is carried unanimously, so we have a point three added. Now, there is a desire to split each of the points for voting purposes.
Sorry, I just apologies. If we could just pause for a quick comment from the city manager?
Oh, I'm sorry. Please, go ahead, Ms. Lock.
So, thank you, Deputy Mayor, or Counselor Carmel. I just wanted to clarify because we heard some commentary about using the reserve for this and for us to enact this, this would have to be a budget discussion. So, I just want to make sure that that's clear for implementation of this pilot. It requires a budget discussion, which we would bring forward as part of SOBA.
So, should we be amending part two to include a phrase that says, and budget adjustments come to the SOBA?
So, just to clarify, and the city manager will correct me if I get this wrong, the motion as it should be amended, so if we could take an amendment to the effect that the implementation of the pilot taxi voucher program as outlined in option two, a program restricted to medical trips only for all DATs clients, as per the October 16th report, be approved, subject to the appropriate budget adjustments being approved at the November budget discussion.
Thank you. I think we can take that as a friendly amendment. Otherwise, it can't actually be accepted as a motion, I'm guessing.
It could be an amendment to point two if you wanted, but if it's accepted by the assembly, we will just take it as friendly.
Any objection to that friendly amendment to point two? Seeing none, then point is, oh, sorry?
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Chair.
I can't see the list, Counselor Paquette, so I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, it's okay. It's, I actually can't click in, but question about that would mean that that may change the timeline for the pilot, possibly, and I'm just wondering if that's the case, should we have a timeline then for the pilot also included in the, in the wording of the motion?
I think we, oh, Counselor Paquette, it's Adam Locklin here. I think we can provide that as part of, when we bring this forward as part of SOBA, a recommended timeframe, if that's workable for you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And just for your information, the mayor is now on the line, so we've got 12 members of council.
I'm back to...
Oh, thank you very much, Counselor Nichol.
Very good. Thank you. Mayor Iverson, what would you like to do? Should I pass you the chair at this point or do you want me to keep going?
No, if you can keep driving, that would be helpful. I apologize. I had a specialist appointment run a little bit long, so I'm just heading to City Hall now. If you could keep running the meeting, that would be great. Thanks for starting without me and I apologize for, for being late.
Thank you. All right, then. So, hearing no further questions, anyone caring to speak to any of the three parts to the motion?
Sorry, could, could you read out the motion? I apologize.
I can, for sure. So, part one is that the October 16th, 2020 City Operations Report, 7353, be received for information. So, that's the first item. The second motion is that the implementation of a pilot taxi voucher program as outlined in option two, a program restricted to medical trips only for all DATs clients of the October 16th, 2020 City Operations Report, 8036, be approved, subject to the appropriate budget adjustments being approved of the fall SOBA. And point three is that attachment to be kept private, subject to section 27 of the Freedom of Information and Privacy Protection Act. So, we'll call the vote then on part one.
I'm a yes on part one.
Thank you.
Counselor Henderson?
Counselor Henderson is absent, as far as I know. We should only have 12 at this point.
We're good to go.
Please display the vote. And that is carried unanimously. Part two of the motion, please vote.
I'm a no. It's not coming up for me, sorry.
Yep, we just sent the vote out, so we'll record that as a no, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Nack? Sorry, Counselor Zadik?
I, I voted. It's a yes.
It just came through. Thank you.
Please display the vote. And that was defeated five to seven. Is there a desire for me to read out the split?
If you could, that would be extremely helpful.
Voting in favor were Counselors Banga, Nack, Katerina, Nichol, and Zadik. Voting against were, was Mayor Iverson and Counselors Hamilton, Walters, McKean, Esslinger, Paquette, and myself. I will now move to vote on item three of the motion. Please vote.
I have all the votes.
Please display the vote. And that was carried 12 to zero. Thank you. So, that takes us then to item 615, prospective temporary shelter, and I believe, was it Counselor Nack that selected this? No?
That is correct.
It is. You have no recollection of selecting this, Counselor Nack?
I do. I just elected it because it was on the agenda as a new item, so I wasn't particularly, I didn't know if there was a presentation or anything, but I'll defer to others if they have questions.
I believe there is a presentation.
Just some opening comments, if we can, Mr. Chair?
Certainly. Please go ahead.
Good morning. We're here today to provide a verbal update on the development permit being considered by administration is being brought to City Council based on the nature of the permit and application and its considerations for council direction on addressing homelessness and responses to COVID-19. Before we get started, just want to remind council that we may need to go into private if a legal opinion is required in relation to this matter. The Mustard Seed, a nonprofit social agency, has submitted a development permit application for a special event use within a medium industrial zone. The application is under consideration based on the unique circumstances of the pandemic and the difficulty for homeless, homeless-serving agencies to find a willing property owner and a building of significant size to allow physical distancing that could meet life safety and fire code requirements. The development permit is not something we typically bring to council. As part of the delegated authority of administration, we determine the completeness and appropriateness of a development permit application and make our decision. However, due to the extraordinary circumstances that COVID-19 has had on our community and our vulnerable residents and council's interest in finding solutions for these experiencing homelessness, we wanted to ensure that council was aware of the application and because of the discussion that happened at Emergency Advisory Committee and that you have the opportunity, if you wish, to provide direction. In response to the pandemic, the Mustard Seed, the nonprofit social agency serving people experiencing poverty and homelessness, has expanded their Edmonton service, offering to include overnight and 24/7 shelter service. They serve clients all across the city and they are one of the few social agencies offering services south of the river. These sell-side services are at capacity. To expand their service offerings, the Mustard Seed has canvassed suitable private and publicly held buildings to offer 24/7 shelter services. After months of searching, they found a willing property owner and a building large enough to allow for physical distancing that would meet life safety and fire code requirements. The site located in the CPR urban neighborhood is zoned medium industrial. The Mustard Seed applied for the development permit on September 23rd to operate the special event and to construct exterior alterations and a temporary accessory building for a shower trailer. Their intent is to open on November 1st and operate until October 21st, or sorry, operate until May 21st, 2021. This privately owned site will be run by the Mustard Seed and is not receiving any municipal funding. They applied for a special event use as their operations on site must be temporary and are in response to the pandemic. Though their service offerings and outreach with vulnerable populations, they are known that there are unhoused individuals within the surrounding neighborhoods that do not have the ability to meet public health recommendations during the pandemic. With physical distancing requirements, these individuals also do not have a place for warm during the winter months. Administration has been reviewing the permit application solely as a temporary use based on this understanding. If the property owner of the Mustard Seed wishes to extend or make permanent use of this site as a 24/7 shelter, administration would require the site to be rezoned. The general industrial use building owned by Sesko is adjacent to their industrial fabrication and assembly yards. The site associated with the development permit is a separate parcel and is fenced from neighboring properties. Unless directed by council, administration will complete the circulation and assessment process on this development permit application. And once a decision is made, it'll be communicated to the applicant. If the city of Edmonton approves a development permit, it'll, it would be with a variance on the length of the special event. This variance would require mandatory notification to the properties within a 60-minute radius where the owners could ask questions or voice concerns or support for the development permit. If the permit application is approved, the applicant is indicated they will move into the premise on November 1st and assume the risk of occupying this space during the community notification period. If an approved development permit is appealed and overturned or refused by the subdivision appeal board, the applicant will be unable to apply on the same site for a minimum of six months from the date of the written decision of the SDAB. Within the city plan, embracing inclusiveness and compassion are big city moves that are needed to achieve our city building goals. These are complex principles that we apply to complex situations like the Mustard Seed application. In this situation, administration as a regulatory body needs to embrace consistency in interpretation while recognizing our actions, especially within a public health emergency can have serious consequences for the most vulnerable. We'd be pleased to answer any questions or that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. McCabe. I will go to Counselor Nichol first as the ward counselor, if that's okay. Counselor McKean?
Absolutely.
I have no questions with administration, Mr. Chairman. As given our discussions in private, I think this decision has already been made by the council.
Thank you. Counselor McKean?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mustard Seed has proven, I think, to be a really good partner and has, has operated shelter on the south side in years past, yes?
Counselor, that, that's correct. And just to elaborate a little bit, the partnership we had when they mobilized at Kinsman Support Center was, was very productive. There were a few hiccups along the way, but those got resolved and it was a pretty, pretty effective facility.
Well, there's always going to be hiccups, yeah. What I, what will be the capacity, do we know of this shelter facility or temporary accommodation facility?
Counselor McKean, it's approximately 100 people.
Okay. And it, like what is proposed for the Convention Center, it'll be all services on site. Food, sleeping facilities, perhaps some other services around treatment options or counseling or that sort of thing?
So, Counselor McKean, that's subject to a zoning hearing that may occur on November 3rd, and so at this time, until we get through that process, we wouldn't be certain as to all of the services that would be able to be provided on site.
And just to add to that, Counselor McKean, it is our understanding that Mustard Seed will, will provide a drop-in component and 24/7 services.
Okay, but to say anything more than that would require the zoning. Okay. Okay. But to say anything more than that would require the zoning, okay. And given the risk, there's a risk here of a SDAB appeal. Can you say what you're going to do as far as aiding Mustard Seed around engagement with nearby property owners to try to bring down the temperature?
Counselor McKean, it's our understanding from Mustard Seed that they have had conversations with their neighbors and have amended some of their operational plans related to the comments that they heard from the surrounding property owners.
Great. Well, good work to them and good work to you folks for doing this on such short notice. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Walters?
Thank you. I guess I have a couple of questions about operational capacity through the whole kind of pandemic response slash shelter ecosystem. And I wonder if those are best dealt with in private? Now, there is in private a component to this. So would it be wise for us to go into private and have that conversation, Ms. Andrew Chuck or Ms. McCabe? Just to talk about there. I guess my questions are operational capacity in terms of who's running the other accommodations, how that relates to this, which I generally think is an excellent idea, but just I have those questions.
So we will have an opportunity to talk about some of the other issues in private. I'm looking at Ms. McCabe, so we're not jumping in.
I guess my question is, have we announced yet who the operator will be for the pandemic accommodation?
We can have that conversation in private as part of nine point two.
My point. Thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Walters. I'm sorry, it's my hesitation. I'm wondering if there is a need for a conversation in private on six fifteen as well? Or will all this be covered under nine point two? Just looking for some advice from admin.
Depends on what you'd like to talk about. If you'd like the legal advice on six fifteen in terms of the risks associated with this development permit, I would suggest that you go in private for that. If it's about overall, if it's about the shelter that administration's setting up, that would be in nine point two.
Okay. Then I'm wondering if it's appropriate then if we go into private to discuss six fifteen and nine point two at this point?
Absolutely.
Am I on side procedurally with that suggestion?
Correct.
So I take a motion on that?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm still on the list for a question.
Yes, I understand that, Counselor Banga, but I'm wondering if we should have the conversation in private first before we come back to public questions? Would that be all right?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Please vote on going in private? Or I guess I can take...
We have it ready to go.
If you don't want to go in private, put up your hand. Very good.
Sorry. I'd like to vote, please.
So we've sent out the vote so that all of council can vote on going in private?
Oh, I'm sorry. Very good. I'm sorry. My mistake. Please vote.
We have 12 votes.
Please display the vote. Thank you. That has carried 11 to one. So we are now moving into private. Counselor Nicol was against.